Good evening. I call to order the meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission for the City of Apache Junction. The date is Tuesday, February 23rd, 2021. The time is now 7:00 PM. I invite you to stand with me and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call. Rudy?
Commissioner Barker?
Yes.
Commissioner Begum.
Here.
Commissioner Cantwell?
Here.
Vice Chair Hanchy?
Here.
Chairman Heck?
Here.
Commissioner Cross?
Here.
Commissioner Gage could not be with us this evening, Mr. Chairman. He's got illness in the family.
Very good. Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is consideration and approval of the agenda and consideration and approval of the regular meeting minutes of January 21st, 2021. So do I hear a motion to accept the agenda and the minutes?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Robin?
That the Planning and Zoning Commission accepted the agenda as presented and approved the minutes from the January 12th, 2021 regular meeting.
Very good. Thank you. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I have a second. Roll call. Rudy?
Commissioner Barker?
Yes.
Commissioner Begum?
Yes.
Commissioner Cantwell?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hanchy?
Yes.
Chairman Heck?
Yes.
Commissioner Cross?
Yes.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Thank you. All right, so that there is no public hearing items scheduled for this evening. And so I'll go on to old business. Any old business?
Nope.
Negative? Okay, so then we will go on to the new business. There are three items. The first is file ID number 21-082. It's Presentation of Discussion on Proposed Changes to the Apache Junction City Code, Volume 2, Land Development Code, Chapter 2, Subdivision and Minor Land Division Regulations. And I believe that Sidney, you'll be the presenter.
Good evening, members of the commission. For the record, my name is Sidney Urias, one of the planners here on staff. Tonight I will be presenting the proposed text amendments for the subdivision and minor land division regulations. So as the title suggests, this discussion and this presentation is broken up in two parts. The first part really speaks about the subdivision plating process, which specifically derives from the auction and the development of the area here in blue and in red. The first part of the first phase of development will be outlined in 2,800 acres here, but part of that process, the development team, the applicant, which is made up of D.R. Horton and Brookfield, is responsible to master plan all of the area there, both areas in red and in blue. So the reason for the proposed changes is they are master planning that whole area and they are including a number of detailed plans, both for the 2,800 areas in specific and the remainder of that property. Those plans include plans for roads, roads, water, sewer, stormwater, subdivision designs, amenities, architecture, and public facilities. So it's a very comprehensive planning effort. They are also anticipating the growth and development to be very quick. They are wanting to start construction of single-family homes within probably the next 12 to 18 months or so. And they are anticipating about 1,500 single-family permits a year. Just to give that a bit of context, we probably do anywhere from 110 to 140 single-family permits a year here. So it's going to be a tremendous amount of growth for the city and very quickly. The developers are seeking, the applicant team, the developers, same people, are seeking to streamline the approval process of the planning, of the plating procedures. Due to the upfront planning for, you know, all the infrastructure that I just named, the coordination with staff and also the control mechanisms that are outlined in certain planning documents. As part of their proposal, they are submitting a pre-annexation development agreement. They're also submitting a master planned community document, which is probably anywhere from 100 to 150 pages long. And after that is a more detailed level of planning that is called a development unit plan. The idea is that because of so much detail has been put into these plans and that these plans are presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission, of course, staff, the Planning and Zoning Commission, and approved by the city council, that when it comes to a pre-plat submittal, the pre-plat submittal will be reviewed by a subdivision committee made up of the city engineer, planning manager, and development services principal engineer. Currently, a pre-plat is heard by or presented and heard and considered by the planning commission and approved by the city council. And at that time, then they are free to work on engineering documents and submit for their final plats. In this process, where it differs a bit is the committee will take a look at those pre-plats and potentially approve those administratively. If there's a disagreement on the pre-plat phase or something within the pre-plat that is planned for, then the appeal will be heard by the city manager. And if the city manager cannot make a decision, then it will be heard by the city council. At that time as well, instead of waiting for a final plat approval by city council, the development team has asked to be able to submit at-risk engineering plans. And what this does is it saves them about two to six months within their process. And they think and they feel that is justified due to the amount of upfront planning that is different from a smaller subdivision. The second part of tonight's discussion is no longer for the MPCs, but really mostly for the older parts of Apache Junction. Staff has received direction to staff from city council to kind of look at our minor land division changes. So we receive maybe three to six land splits a year or so. Larry could correct me if I'm wrong, but it's somewhere within that number. And at times, we received land splits that caused problems for the administration of that lot and especially when that lot is sold to another owner. So right now, we do not have language in our subdivision code that outlines what a really a lot should look like. So we have lots sometimes, a picture on the right on the top, we have lots sometimes that have private access ways. And if that lot is ever sold at a later date, then, you know, there's disagreements on who maintains that, how wide is that, you know, some people want to close that off, you know, that's my property, that's their property. And also, we have problems when these lots have very unique property boundaries. And when it comes to setbacks, the property envelope is very limited and very small, which really has the ability to have code enforcement issues for legal structures and not meeting setbacks and distance requirements from neighboring properties. So I'm not going to go through every single one of these bullet points, but basically it's really saying that we have certain parameters that we have to meet for a land split, which we currently do not have outlined in the code right now. That's, here we have some additional examples that we found. So very, very unique parcels, and we're trying to really get away from that and really have a rectangular lot instead of a curvilinear lot or a lot that has lots of angles. And then the building envelope gets very confusing to administer and such. That is really the, all of my presentation. Part of the item or part of the attachment of the item, we had a 40-page document. The first part of the presentation really just went over all the changes that the applicant team is proposing. I'm here if you have any questions.
Commissioner Barker?
Can you just kind of clean up all those questions? Page 10 of your document here, H, with nothing on it, and I was kind of wondering if there was supposed to be something there?
What page is that?
Commissioner Barker, we were going to add language specific to H, and it shouldn't have been highlighted, and that'll be deleted in the next version of that. It's just really a typo.
Oh, okay. That's great. I think I know another typo for you too on this.
Good. Okay.
Page 12. Oh, second line, it should be site development that has been submitted. We need to add the word "that."
Sure.
Sorry, my English teacher comes out.
No, that's appreciated. Thank you, Commissioner Barker, of course.
Thank you very much.
So the intent of tonight's meeting is really to have a discussion about the proposed changes. So if you have any questions, I'm here to answer those. Or questions?
Mr. Chair? Yes. Commissioner Cross?
I do have a question regarding, talking about the land splits being straight lined. Will there be cul-de-sacs in the master plan and development? Because with a cul-de-sac, how do you make a straight line on a circle?
Commissioner Cross, just so I understand, are you speaking about lots that are in the master plan community? Is that what you're?
Yeah, I mean, in here, you're trying to do away with these, you know, obviously want to do away with the, these broken up zones. But you state that all the new ones will be straight-lined properties. And I'm wondering how that works with the cul-de-sac, if you're going to have cul-de-sacs in the community?
Commissioner Cross, not specifically to cul-de-sacs. The idea is that the sides of the lot will be rectangular, and the rear of the lot should be rectangular. Of course, if there is an existing cul-de-sac, then of course we'll take that in mind. The other idea is also to have the minimum amount of required frontage per zoning district. So each zoning district has a minimum amount of street frontage that is required. Right now, you know, if we include the language that is being proposed tonight, then flag lots like this, you know, we wouldn't have that really issue of private access ways and things like that. So not really specific to cul-de-sacs.
Mr. Chair, if I could clarify, though. These minor land divisions are really for our five-acre lots, two-and-a-half-acre lots. They're not for the master plan community. So what we're doing, the developer has asked for some changes under master plan community. So that's the streamlining of the plat approval process. This is for us internally to have better review of these minor land divisions. So the minor land divisions are for lot splits, lot combinations, and what we call minor land divisions. So minor land division is where you don't need a plat. So this is in our subdivision code, is contained in Volume 2, Chapter 2 of the Apache Junction City Code. So there's a section in that code that deals with lot combos, lot line adjustments, et cetera. So what we've seen, there were more slides when this went to the council, many sawtooth-shaped lots. So this provision here really just relates to those one-off, and again, Sidney mentioned three to six a year, the last year or two, because just the way the times are, we're seeing a lot of five-acre lots get carved into one, two-and-a-half acre, and then two acre and a quarter. So this is to prevent someone from creating these weird-shaped lots. But it doesn't apply to the master plan community. I think just to make sure everybody was on the same page here.
Commissioner? Yes. Chair?
Yeah. This isn't going to affect any of the existing ones. This is just moving forward, correct?
Correct, Commissioner.
Yep.
Sidney, question. So this special committee that would be developed, I forget what it's called.
Oh, sorry, Sidney.
The subdivision committee, yes.
Subdivision committee.
Yeah.
So I am assuming that this really just relates to this, where we're looking down the road with this master plan community. This is not something that would really apply after, once that's developed. Is that?
Chair Heck, this is specific to the 8,100 acres that is being proposed.
Right.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Is there any concern that the city had to give away any rights or any of our opportunity to raise concerns or questions? I mean, I know these guys are, you know, they want to make this happen fast, and I certainly don't blame them. I just want to make sure we're not going to get steamrolled in the process.
Chair Heck, I don't believe so. There's a number of governing documents, as I mentioned, the pre-annexation development agreement, the master plan community document, and also development unit plans. Of course, the idea is that the pre-plats, preliminary plats, fit within the parameters of those documents. So, and we will, staff will still conduct the review, and then the review will be decided upon by the subdivision committee. So I don't think, you know, we're going to put ourselves in any jeopardy or anything like that.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chair, the time to have your scrutiny is at this third bullet. So it's a lot of information. The developer's going to come forward at the beginning with a 2,780-acre development plan. That is the auction piece. There'll be a second PADA, Pre-Annexation Development Agreement, and a second MPC. So there's one MPC zoning, as Sidney said, 100, 150 pages. It's basically a new chapter of our zoning code for that area in blue. That's the time to scrutinize everything that's in there. And the area in red, there'll be another MPC, could be a little bit shorter because it's still kind of undefined how it would be developed, but that would probably be 100 pages of a guiding document. That's another chapter of the city zoning code. So in essence, what the developer's saying, if they submit a preliminary plat and it's consistent with that preliminary annexation development agreement and it's consistent with the master plan, community master plan, and a development unit plan, then they should be good to go with a preliminary plat. But the time to scrutinize everything, yes.
Okay.
Is the only stuff that will get by, if you will, is the stuff that we let it get by during that, because we're going to have public hearings and all that, is just tant them out to a rezoning. So what we're going to be doing here, and I think the goal was to finish up with the council in July, that's when the annexation and these rezonings would take place. So in May and June, we would be having public meetings. The developer, just like any zoning, has to do outreach meetings and town hall meetings where they're going to invite the public to come and look at this 3,08100-acre development. But after that's approved, they want to start moving, as long as it's consistent with those guiding documents, like Sidney said. So other cities have done this. That's why they came to us. They would like to see an administrative process for these preliminary plats. These plats are going to come in, it could be 1,000 lots, could be 500 lots. There's two developers. One developer is going to be the developer and the builder. The other developer will create these parcels or tracks, unit plans, and then sell those units to a third, another home builder and sell a plat, if you will. So they just want to move fast so that then they can get to the final plat. The final plat will then just be approved by the council, as Sidney indicated.
But this eventually will run the normal formal process of going through planning and zoning and city council, then that?
MPC, yeah, just these documents, though. The PADA, that's a preliminary annexation development agreement. The MPC, that's it. That's all that goes to the council. The unit plans have to be consistent with the MPC. The MPC is what I'm saying is the chapter, a new chapter of the zoning code.
Right.
And that's going to lay out all the design requirements, all the design criteria, the setbacks, the heights.
Mr. Chair?
Yep, sorry. Commissioner Barker?
Two things, actually. This is, is a master plan community a certain number of acres?
Yeah, and our zoning code and our general plan, a master plan community is over 100 acres.
Okay.
So if someone comes in with a 10-acre subdivision, they go through a regular process or a 40-acre subdivision. These changes that we're talking about only apply to a master plan community that's in the general plan as land use designated master plan community, and now they're coming in and getting their zoning as an MPC.
Time out.
Yep.
Okay. So 100 acres or more?
Yeah.
For master? So all that acreage that is south of us, that we are not annexing today, but will be annexing in the future, more than likely, will come under this MPC regulation within the subdivision code, correct?
No.
No.
So right now, the city limits go to, whoops.
I'm looking ahead, Larry.
I am, too. I'm just saying that the area, the city limits already go to Elliott.
Right.
This area, this part is already in the city limits.
Right.
This area to the south, from here all the way to the 24 is what we're trying to annex.
Gotcha.
All of this area, including this, this, and this, is all designated master plan community, even this area over here that's in our planning boundary.
That was what I was asking.
Okay, yes. So everything in this planning boundary is designated as master plan community.
So these regulations, these new rules for master plan communities, including the subdivision committee, will apply to that area in the future?
Correct.
Thank you. That was?
Correct.
One of the questions that Commissioner?
As long as something comes in at 100 acres or more.
Right.
Yep.
Got that. And he asked something else, and now I've forgotten what it was.
Well, that was two things.
How did he get you back around?
That was two things.
Point the club.
That was two things.
It'll come to me eventually.
So again, these proposed changes apply to the plat review process for master planned zoned area.
Gotcha.
The other part of it are the changes that really relate to a five-acre lot to do a lot division or an acre and a quarter. And we're just bringing them together. We don't change the codes that often, and this is efficient for us to bring both of these text changes kind of rolled together. So one thing that we haven't talked about is timing, because we have a couple other ordinances that are coming up. So we haven't advertised these for public hearings yet. So we normally would have a work session like this. We would bring you back in two weeks or four weeks, whatever. I don't, not that we have to do all three of these and bring them to the council all at one meeting. They may end up that way. But we have to schedule a public hearing, so we have to have a public hearing on the changes, the text that we have and the typos. We'll have a public hearing. You'll make a recommendation. It'll go to the council. They'll probably have a work session and a hearing. We have not set those dates. So we can talk about that. As maybe we finish, or we'll just propose, we have to advertise for public hearings for both here and the council for all three of these items. But just so you know, that's not been set yet. We kind of want to see how things happen tonight and what kind of schedule we are on. But we can bring one forward. This one, we may bring ahead and maybe medical, or you say medical marijuana, maybe marijuana is two weeks, something like that. We just don't know yet. So just know that this comes back in the form of an ordinance and a public hearing. Well, I guess we don't have to have the ordinance ready till the council meeting, right? Yep.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. That answers one of my questions, is what's the next step in all of this? And these two, are they going through as one change or two changes?
Just one change. One ordinance change. Yep.
Okay. And?
They're in that document now, both of these. So the slideshow depicted, what's in yellow in the text are both changes.
Okay. That's what I was assuming. It's just two totally different issues, but.
Yep.
And so as far as the master planned community, the MPC document is basically our pre-plat approval process for the commission.
No, it's the zoning approval.
Okay, it's a zoning approval, but it's setting the groundwork for all of the final, for all of the plating that's going to go. And then the staff is going to determine that that plating is consistent with the MPC document.
Correct.
What happens if it is not consistent? That's when it goes, it gets appealed to the city manager?
Well, the developer may work it out with city staff and bring it into compliance. That would be, that's usually the first goal. If it can't be agreed upon, then, and they disagree, because it's similar. You can approve a preliminary plat with no conditions, with conditions, or you can deny it. So say the staff approves it, the staff committee approves it with conditions, and the developer doesn't like condition 12. They can try to work it out, or they can appeal condition 12 to the city manager. And if the city manager agrees with staff, then I guess they go to the council.
So we won't see any of the plating after the MPC is approved until it goes into final plating?
And this committee doesn't see final plats. Only the council sees final plats.
Okay. I just wasn't sure of procedures.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions from the commission? Okay. Thank you, Sidney. And we will move on to the next item. It's file number 21-081. Presentation of Discussion on Proposed Changes to the Apache Junction City Code, Volume 2, Land Development Code, supplemental regulations, Section 1-6-12 on, well, it's medical marijuana, but also recreational. And this will be Kelsey.
All right. Good evening, commission members. My name is Kelsey Shatnick. I'm a planner on staff, and tonight I'm going to be presenting the proposed changes to Section 1-6-2, Medical Marijuana, to incorporate regulations on recreational marijuana. Just to give a little bit of background, on November 3rd, 2020, Arizona passed the Smart and Safe Arizona Act relating to the responsible adult use, regulation, and taxation of marijuana, also known as the Recreational Marijuana Act. And on December 1st, 2020, staff was directed to explore two options to the regulation of recreational marijuana establishments. The first was given by Councilmember Rizzi to allow existing dispensaries to become dual licensees, requiring CUP amendment process to operate under the same rules as existing dispensaries, allow recreational marijuana sales, too, but not cultivation or processing, allow medical marijuana to convert to recreational marijuana through a CUP amendment, and the code to still allow for medical marijuana cultivation and infusion kitchens. And then an amendment to that motion, Councilmember Evans, motioned that to allow recreational marijuana to be treated like retail and liquor stores in the B1, B2, and B3 zoning districts. So in response to that, we have created two versions of this ordinance, which you were provided. The first version regulates recreational marijuana establishments the same as medical marijuana dispensaries, and it does not allow for recreational marijuana testing facilities. And then the second version allows recreational marijuana establishments in the B1, B2, and B3 zoning districts and regulates recreational marijuana establishments the same way as retail and liquor stores. In addition to the proposed changes in 1-6-12, there will also be an addition to Table 5-3, Non-Residential Use Regulations, to include recreational marijuana, as well as changes to Article 1-17, the definitions. So I've provided, I think, three definitions, just to kind of, that I thought were the most important relating to the text changes. A marijuana establishment includes a retail establishment at which the sale of marijuana and marijuana products is conducted, along with a possible cultivation and manufacture of marijuana products, an off-site location where marijuana is cultivated, processed, and products are made, but which does not conduct sales to consumers, and an off-site location at which marijuana products are manufactured, packaged, stored, but which does not conduct sales to consumers. So it's pretty all-inclusive when we say marijuana establishment, which is why we have made certain edits to the code to clarify. And then a marijuana testing facility is an ADHS facility or facilities operated by another licensed entity to analyze the potency of and test the marijuana for harmful contaminants. And then a dual licensee is an entity that holds both a nonprofit medical marijuana dispensary registration and a marijuana establishment license. I thought the best way to do this, I could just pull up each different draft. They are very similar, but also very different, and then we can just, you can ask me questions along the way.
Questions from the commission?
Mr. Chair?
I guess I have. Yes, Commissioner Cantwell?
I'm new to this. Is the nonprofit medical dispensary, is the nonprofit meaningful?
I believe that's how they're defined. I'm not sure.
Who do you want to take it?
It has to do...
Yes, I have. Yes, Commissioner Cantwell.
I'm new to this. Is the nonprofit medical dispensary, is the nonprofit meaningful?
I believe that's how they're defined. I'm not sure.
Rudy, you want to take it?
It has to do with the way, the, it has to do with the corporate structure. They have to be a certain type of nonprofit organization. Do they make money? Absolutely, they make money. But, the, the way they're defined under the state law, in order to be a medical marijuana dispensary, you have to be a type of nonprofit. Now, the, the recreational marijuana, recreational marijuana people don't have to be nonprofit. And the dispensaries, the medical marijuana dispensaries, basically are not taxed, whereas the recreational dispensaries are taxed. So, that also has to do with, with being a nonprofit versus non, nonprofit. It's complicated, but-
I guess the only other thing I was gonna add, Rudy, was the, the nonprofit entity, they are the one that holds the license. They then turn around and have a management company, and that's what seems to be bought and sold all over the state. So, the, the management company is an, it's a corporate entity that manages on behalf of the nonprofit. And that's where, you know, folks are buying and selling these things. So, the nonprofit kind of stays with the license, but the management company seems to be where all the money is.
So, there is not a for-profit medical dispensary?
There is not in Arizona, no. Every of the original 27 and the additional 15, they all had to be nonprofits.
And what are the differences between medical and recreational?
The way they're taxed.
Volume, but-
The, the way they're taxed. Basically, they're selling the same product, but if you have a medical marijuana card, you're not paying sales tax. If you don't have a medical marijuana card, you're being taxed at 16%. And I believe senior citizens are taxed at a lower rate, but it's a, and the city does not get any of that tax. It all goes to the state, and it funds other programs that are set up under the recreational marijuana statute.
But, the accoutrements, if you want to call it that, they're get local sales tax, right? Like, if someone wants to buy-
Yeah, the, the other things, uh-
A pipe, or a-
Yeah.
Little e-machine, or whatever, those things would get local sales tax.
Rolling paper.
Accessories, is that's right.
You know what to call them.
Paraphernalia, paraphernalia.
Accessories.
And the sale of the accessories is allowed under both?
Yes.
Okay.
So, a couple questions. So, when it comes to that, the medical marijuana card, do we know, is there, I know, I'm sure there isn't, any limit to how many medical marijuana cards can be issued?
In the state, total?
Yeah.
No, there hasn't been. It's a couple hundred thousand now, I think, last count.
As long as you've got a doctor's, uh-
Okay. So, I, this is one of those things that I think is a little peculiar to me. So, if you, it seems like it's not that hard to get a medical marijuana card. So, once you do that, then when you, when you buy your marijuana, it's not taxed. So, you could, all you need to do is get a maro, medical marijuana card, and there is no tax then for you, because you got a card.
That's correct.
All right?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, so that's-
Yeah, we usually have to pay, usually have to pay for a quote, unquote, medical exam. So, you're paying 50 to $150 for an exam. You, I guess you have to equate how much you're gonna buy before it breaks even on the sales tax.
Right. Okay.
Obviously, you have to have a legitimate medical reason.
Obviously, yeah.
Yeah, that's right. Exactly, yeah. Right.
Normally, it's-
No, you have to have some doctor who will sign you, that you have a legitimate-
Normally, it's attending for our planning commission meetings.
So, again, we all qualify, so let's go to the, yeah. Okay. Another question, then. The, in terms of the, this dual licensee, it seems like if you're gonna try and manage the not-for-profit versus the recreational, and they're, while they can be duly licensed, they can't operate at the same location. They have to be, I mean, there's gotta be some separation.
No.
No, they can, they can operate, and they can, they can-
So, that's happening today. So, both of our medical marijuana dispensaries, and Rudy knows this better, is they were given authorization by the state to go ahead and become recreational marijuana facilities.
Okay. All right.
So, they-
Where they are, they can just-
They currently are. So, then the question is, okay, going forward, if somebody else wants to do recreational, do you really limit it to the two dispensaries we have now? That's kind of one motion. The other council member made a motion that, hey, it's free enterprise now, open it up. So, it's very difficult for staff to write this. That's why there's two-
Okay.
-ordinances that, so they're already operating. So, it's, some have described it as they won the lottery when they got to do the medical. Now, they've been essentially given recreational. If you, some cities are excluding it to only folks with a medical nonprofit license. So, you can only do recreational at a medical marijuana. Other folks have the philosophy that, why should they get a, I don't know, the corner on the market, if you will? And why couldn't it go, you could still have the same locational requirements. I think that's really what could be, happen here. And even then, it wasn't clear. So, you could still say that a recreational marijuana facility still has to be so far from a park and a school. You could treat it as a CUP, but let them go in other retail places. Or, I think the one proposal here is just has to be 300 feet from something. So, again, maybe some of these questions will be answered, but that's really the philosophy. It's either only allow them at a current medical facility, medical dispensary, or allow them to be a retail enterprise, and let other entrepreneurs come and do it. But, also, maybe keep those same spacing requirements. Maybe from a medical facility, a, a medical marijuana facility, or again, just take those CUP requirements that we have for medical, apply them to a new retail establishment. That's kind of the two proposals you're getting here.
Now, the state, when they, you know, the Arizona Department of Health was very much involved in determining how many medical marijuana dispensaries you could have in a given location. It seems like with this, they have not, they have been silent. They have not given any, it's up to the, up to the, to the individual city or whatever to decide, as we're just talking about then, right?
Yeah, the city gets to decide if they only want to have them at a, at a medical facility, or not at all. Like, if some cities have, don't even allow medical facilities in their community. Some of them moved around because there wasn't, they tried to spread them around the state, and then those operators found out that there weren't that many patients there, so they petitioned the state to move them to more populated area. So, anyway, I, I think we should let Kelsey walk through these, just so you get a better, then we can, you know, do more questions, I guess.
Okay, so, this is version one, which again regulates recreational marijuana establishments in the same manner as medical marijuana dispensaries, and does not allow recreational marijuana testing facilities. So, a lot of the text in this specific version did not change. It basically was just modified to include recreational marijuana. The biggest, the first big change that you see is down here in, under C zoning districts on page one. Number four states that an existing medical marijuana establishment that intends to become a dual licensee to sell recreational marijuana shall present proof of dual license C status to the city's business license office. So, basically, this just is kind of the guideline of, if you are going to become a dual licensee, not only do you still have to go through the same CUP process, but then you also have to include this information. And then, clarify that the operation of a recreational marijuana testing facility is prohibited, and that the commercial cultivation and processing of recreational marijuana is also prohibited. There weren't many changes to facility security, just a little bit of clarification on a couple of those items. Again, with the application process, still have to go through a CUP, just adding in recreational marijuana. Not many changes have been made to this section either. Same with conditions of approval. It's just adding in that recreational marijuana. Same with operating requirements, just adding that in there, because again, they are being considered the same in terms of regulating them. We have taken out this section, talking about dispensaries selling marijuana-related products, because if they are a dual licensee, then they can sell to anybody that is of age, as opposed to just people who hold a medical card. And then, this one, patient home cultivation, we were originally going to take it out of the code, but then we, staff took a look at it and said, because, you know, we kind of thought, well, you'll be able to grow it in your home as it is. But, we decided to leave this in and clarify that it will be medical marijuana patient home cultivation for, you know, potentially people who are under the age of 21, and who don't have a caregiver. It would still allow them to cultivate medical marijuana in their home. And then, this is the kind of biggest addition to it. It's home cultivation. This is basically just clarification on what is allowed, allowing individuals of 21 years of age or older to cultivate six marijuana plants, having two or more individuals able to have 12 in their home, and then, basic regulations of where it should be, basically having it secured, not having dust, fumes, vapors, odors in the environment. And then, we've also included cultivation as a part of a home, based occupation is not allowed. It should be pretty straightforward. We just wanted to make sure to have that clarification in there. And so, that is the first, that is the first version. I don't know if anybody had any specific questions.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Cantwell.
Go back to point five, which is the caregiver. Now, if I read that right, the caregiver can, is the one who is growing the plants for somebody with miracle, medical marijuana, and the patient has to live at least 25 miles from the closest dispensary?
Correct.
That's correct.
Okay. Which just seems to be, I don't know if that's in the state regulations, that that's the way that it is. That just seems to be a license that, okay, I want to grow 50 plants, so I'm going to say that I have, I'm a caregiver for five people out in the middle of nowhere, who are 25 miles from the closest dispensary, and as long as I can say that, and may or may not be able to get their signatures on something, then I can grow whatever I want. Do I read that right?
No.
Well, it's, it's 12 per.
The 25 miles is-
Caregiver.
Six.
Six per.
Okay, six per patient.
Six per caregiver, yes.
You got the 25 miles is right, though.
Yeah.
Right.
So, I mean, if I'm a, if I'm a caregiver, I can be a caregiver for multiple patients.
No, 12.
Up to six.
No more than 12.
More, no more than 12, okay.
So, you can only have two.
Okay, that's fine.
Per patient.
Yeah, that one just-
Yeah, but no more than 12.
Seemed like a blank check.
Six plant, or six per patient, no more than 12.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry, go ahead. Yes, Commissioner Barker.
It won't, it won't apply here.
Right.
Because we have two-
Because we have two dispensaries, and 25 miles is not within any-
Well, no, I could be a caregiver, I can for somebody that is more than 25 miles away and grow them on my property.
That was the, that was-
That was the key.
But, one clarification, I think, Mr. Chair, is that the, the caregiver also has to have a license to be a caregiver, right? So, I just can't grow it and drive it 26 miles away, so.
Yeah.
And Rudy said it, maybe caregiver can only have up to six patients?
I believe that's what the statute does.
So, it'd be six times 12 would be the number of plants you could have.
Right.
Okay, so there are limitations on it?
Yes.
But, Larry, doesn't it say right here, I can only have up to 12 plants, though?
No, that's-
Per patient. And there's somewhere else in the state law says you can have up to six patients as a caregiver grower.
Quite a-
Yeah, so it should be six times 12.
72 plants.
72.
Just out of curiosity, how much weed can you grow with one plant?
Depends on the plant.
Depends on the plant?
I'm, I'm unqual, I'm unqualified, I'm unqualified to answer that question.
I want to see who answers that question.
Depends on the type, and depends on how you grow.
Depends on how good you are.
And how good you are.
How green is your thumb?
I fully understand. I'm just kind of wondering.
Are you using hydroponics?
All right, Dirk jumps in.
Natural fertilizers?
Chairman Heck?
We have been, seriously, we have been to a couple of these facilities. I honestly don't know. But, tho, those facilities, they're using grow lights, and I'm sure the best techniques and climate-controlled. And those plants are, I don't know, Rudy, they're about, I don't know, 36 inches tall. They're pretty robust. So, I, but I don't know how much quantity you get from that, and, you know, they clip it, but it grows again. I, I, I don't know how, how much that actually produces, so.
Commissioner Cross?
Yeah, I, page three, Roman numeral two. At the very end, you have a single entrance, single secure entrance. Now, is that total, does that preclude exits? In other words, you know, if you only have one entrance, two into the building, is there also an emergency exit out the back? Or is that just for entrance for patrons?
I think so, that's-
Yeah.
Rudy might know how the one that used to be at the bank or the credit union here, but I think you're only allowed one entrance.
They have one entrance.
There's one main entrance, then.
But, you have one main entrance, but you do have the ability to have multiple exits?
I honestly don't know.
I think they're-
Well, state law requires you to have fire exits.
Yeah.
So, you would have to have at least one.
The, the two facilities that I'm aware of, there's the main entrance through the lobby to the, to the sales room, and then, accessible to employees only are the exits.
Okay.
Right. Fair enough.
Commissioner, I have a question.
Yes.
The state law says that these, that I can grow six plants. Is that right?
Yes.
Why are we allowing a caregiver to grow 12 plants per patient? If I can only grow six?
The, that is covered under the medical marijuana statute. That's language straight out of state law.
Why can't I grow 12?
You'd have to change state law.
Or become a caregiver.
For personal recreational marijuana use.
It might be different for, under the medical, for personal.
Yes.
This is under recreational only. Under recreational, you can grow six plants.
That's what it's saying.
That's what I'm saying.
But, under medical, it may be different under medical.
But, you're taking care of nanny down the street, and you can grow 12?
Well, it's medical.
Well, that's if you're 25 miles away from the facility.
My weed's medical, too.
I'm not familiar with the medical standard.
Oh, no, either.
But, but none of those 12, if you're a caregiver, are for yourself. They're all for the patient.
Correct. I, I get that under ten, yeah. But, I think it's a little disparaging that you have that, that caregiver can grow 12 plants for that one person, but I can only grow six for myself. He's getting 12 plants, I'm getting six. I think that's discrimination.
Could very well be.
Right, your state senator.
Thanks, thanks, Cheech.
So, are we gonna go to the next one, Kelsey? Is that what we're doing?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's go to number two.
Kelsey's trying to move on here.
All right, so, version number two, again, is having recreational handled, still under a CUP process, but separately than medical marijuana. So, most of this information did not change, because it's handled in a separate section. Again, we did add this detail about becoming a dual licensee within the medical marijuana regulations. Let's see. Again, just clarifying information. This was also included in the other draft. So, then, we'll just go straight to the recreational marijuana. A lot of this language is taken directly from the medical marijuana. It is just within its own section to regulate recreational marijuana, and includes that it's allowed in the B1, B2, and B3 zoning districts, which is slightly different than the medical marijuana. And again, pretty much same information. This is the only information that we're still working to tighten up. According to the direction that staff was given, if they're treated like a liquor store, it has to meet a minimum 300 feet distance between public and private schools, as well as, I don't believe daycare facilities is included in that, churches. We're, again, we're still working on the exact language for this section, but this would be the biggest difference between the two. So, if you have any questions, again, a lot of this language, it's directly, it's exactly the language that's in the medical marijuana section.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Barker.
Do the, do the distances there affect either of the medical marijuana stores that we already have?
I, I'm not sure.
No.
No?
No.
And I, and I believe, I believe there is information that kind of talks about if, if something is already in existence.
In effect, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Barker, in effect, the, if we allow more recreational marijuana stores, there would be fewer restrictions than there are for the medical marijuana stores. So under the rules for medical marijuana, they still have to be a quarter mile apart, 750 feet from other protected uses. But if we treat them like liquor stores, they only have to be 300 feet from a school, and that's really about it. They would still require CUP. They would still have to have secure facilities and security plans and all that kind of stuff. But there could be more recreational establishments than, than medical establishments.
Okay, second question. Kelsey, the, the CUP, the medical marijuana has already gone through the CUP process, so they have to go through another CUP process to put recreational marijuana in the same store?
So they would have to amend their CUP, yes.
They would just amend the one that they already have.
Well, I, I think both of our dispensaries have already automatically gone, become dual licensees under statute.
But any new.
They don't have any.
Well, for the current ones, they don't have to go through the CUP process. But for future ones?
Yes.
Yes.
Again, if I could, Mr. Chair, so staff was directed in two different directions, and staff has done the best it could to create regulations based on that council direction. So another possibility, you get to still recommend to the council, of course, when we come back for the public hearing and the final thing, of maybe if you are going to allow recreational establishments to be in B1, B2, B3, you could still have separation requirements from parks and schools and as kind of a hybrid of this proposal. So is that clear what I just said?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So you could take, you, there's two options here. One would be just to allow the existing dispensaries. One says, yes, you can have them, but you kind of follow the liquor license law. The third might be that you allow them, but they still have to meet separation requirements that you, that are similar to the medical ones.
Okay. So many, Commissioner Cantwell?
What's a B3 district?
B3 is our downtown district. It's pretty limited to, you know, just a couple hundred acres around this part of the city.
Yeah, so the recreational would be allowed in that area, but the medical is not?
Yeah, it is.
It already is.
It is already there.
It already is. It already is in the B3.
There is one grandfathered medical establishment in the B3, and if you, if you look at the way the code is written now, there is language in there specifically to deal with that grandfathered use. But, but under the council's direction, the, the medical, interestingly, is allowed in B1, B2, and B4.
Yeah.
The recreational would be, is proposed to be allowed in B1, B2, and B3.
But isn't one in B3 currently?
There is one grandfathered establishment in our B3 zone, yes.
That's the medical.
That's, that's, yes, medical, nature's wonder, and they have now become a dual licensee.
But it's not grandfathered, it has a CUP.
Well, it was grandfathered in the sense that they were there before our code change in 2014.
Ah, okay, under the previous CUP, okay. So as far as, it would be helpful to staff tonight if folks have, I don't know if you're going to have no motion, but if there's a direction to do option A, option B, or option C, it might help this process go faster so that otherwise we'll come back and ask for a little more direction at a, at a, at a next meeting. So I don't know if you want to ponder it for two weeks, or do you say, you know, we want to, so, I don't know, that's my thought is to, because staff's giving you two options, but they're not exactly polar opposite, but they're different. And then so the third option I said would be, yes, go ahead and have recreational, but make it a CUP, kind of go through the same process, but just in B1, 2, 3.
I like that.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, Commissioner Cantwell.
You know, I've been around marijuana since college, but don't understand it. So from what, the history on it, from what I can see, is that medical was basically a way of getting the foot in the door to start letting people use marijuana. Now that we have recreational in the state, that's going to open things up or complicate things. I think the next step, and forgive me, because being retired, I get to watch CNBC Financial during the day, and they recently did something on marijuana where they are expecting the federal laws to change perhaps as early as this year. The important thing on that is that would then allow these marijuana companies to use the banking system and the cultivators to be incorporated and traded on the stock exchanges. So they're seeing that as a huge potential. My guess is, is that, you know, once recreational takes over, I didn't realize the taxing thing, but other than the taxing thing, my feeling is, in the next two or three years, medical's going to kind of go away, because why does somebody want to have the hassle of having to get the medical card when you can do the same thing with a recreational card? The other thing is, within five to 10 years, you're going to have major corporations getting into the cultivation of this. And yeah, this is going to be a whole lot like alcohol in five or 10 years. So I would tend to be thinking along the lines of having the dual, having the separate recreational.
Clarify that, sir.
Option number two, where the medical people, the medical marijuana facilities already are dual licensed for recreational.
Correct.
And then you would also have standalone recreational only.
Gotcha.
Okay. Cultivation, I don't think is going to be anything that comes into play for us, because that's going to, you know, you have been to some of those facilities. That's going to be big growers in rural areas that aren't going to be in a city. They don't want to have the security issues of that.
Well, they're, they're already doing that kind of cultivation in downtown Phoenix in the warehouse districts.
Yeah, okay.
Well, and it's, it's already addressed in here, that's.
Yeah.
Right. We're not going to allow the cultivation, but that may change in the future.
We do. It's in B5 only.
Okay. Yeah. But, you know, I, I, my opinion is, you're going to get into the retail side of things sooner than later.
Okay, I, yeah, I, I'm sorry, Commissioner Hancy.
I mean, I'm under the kind of same principle. I think this is more and more heading towards more like alcohol. I think we should just kind of get out in front of this and maybe push it in that direction and have it go alongside alcohol instead of maybe in a year or two be back here, moving it from the medical side and pushing it over here. Why not, let's just get out in front of it now and kind of make it like alcohol now. Because I think that's where it's going. It's, if you look at places where it's already California, Colorado, that's kind of where it's already going. So I think we could be ahead of a lot of places in Arizona. Let's get out in front of it, and it may provide some boost to our economy here as well. I know we don't get the direct sales tax from the marijuana, but it could provide some other boost to our local economy with the accessories and the other stuff like that. And then if things do change in the future, we could actually be ahead of a lot of other municipalities. That's my two cents.
All right. Thank you. So at this point, if we, I think both of you were looking more or less at the version two, I believe, correct? Yeah. So we're not obviously going to do an official vote here. Is there anyone here that was kind of thinking alternately to version two?
Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner.
I'm kind of thinking the same way with the version two with a, a number three in there for spacing, like you spoke.
Yeah. Yeah, Mr. Chair, I agree.
Okay. Just, is there any objection that I, that I give direction to the staff of our, our support for the version two?
No. I got one. What kind of spacing are we looking at? I mean.
Like liquor stores?
That way, I mean, you could give us, that way staff has something to work on. Or do you just want them to suggest?
I would say let them, I would say give them, give them, we've, we've given you the support for version two. You can put the specifics on it.
Mr. Chairman, so just to summarize here, so commission seems to be inclined to going more with version two, but with spacing requirements similar to medical.
Correct.
Yep, yes. And one thing I will say, thank you for, in both versions, thank you for providing clear requirements on the storage facilities when it comes to the, you know, the cultivation and infusion after what we went through in the past, that it has to be a building and not a cargo container or something. That was, that was a massive headache.
Yeah, that's next.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Those are the, those are the, those are the grow facilities.
So, okay, well, thank you. Thank you, Kelsey. Okay, so then, now we will move on to item, file number 21-080, presentation discussion on proposed changes to the Battery Junction City Code, Volume Two, Land Development Code, supplemental regulations regarding cargo containers.
This is Larry's favorite.
On a scale of one to 10, this ranks minus 35 for Larry, right?
I want to know how many times we have gone through this.
I, I might get to that, but yeah, I think we were so enthralled about working on this, we forgot to put an overall timeline together. So that would have taken more time.
Yeah.
But we have been, we have gone back and forth on this. So I'm going to try to provide some history, some background. I know we have a couple of new commissioners, and so that might help, that some action that was taken by the previous commission and previous councils. And then Morgan, who's our intern, is going to come up and kind of talk about the, kind of just what Kelsey did with pulling the ordinance up. So, so basically, there was an original direction to the staff or the P and Z, and I didn't put the date in here, basically to review and recommend possible changes. So what we had was one citizen come up to the call to the public at a council meeting and said they had a one acre lot, and so, but it was zoned RSGR, and they had five or six storage accessory buildings in their backyard. They had some storm damage, stuff got ruined. So they're zoned RSGR, why couldn't they have a storage container, a cargo container, maybe consolidate their stuff into that one? Well, we said, well, you got to have an acre and a quarter, and you have to have one of our three zonings, RSGR, RS54, RS54M. So basically, the plan commission talked about this, at least two, but maybe more. And so most recently, though, the council motion was on December 1st, that basically direct staff to look at the ability to allow cargo containers on lots in the city based on lot sizes and what can be used and what needs to be done to a cargo container to try and neutralize it, which I really don't know what that means. I kind of know what neutralize it means, but that's what we have to work with. That's the motion that we're working with right now. So let's go back to kind of the beginning. You can only have a cargo container in an RSGR, and I should have added RS54, RS54M, because they are allowed in those zoning, because those are our large lot zonings. And you have to have an acre and a quarter. So the previous plan commission, I want to say last February, March, basically said, here are the options we have. We can, this was amended in 2014. It was amended many times before that as well, as we, as some of us know. You could allow them in all zoning districts, but set new standards, limit the size, limit the number, keep only in the RSGR and RS54, RS54M, but eliminate the 1.25 acre minimum requirement. So the issue there was, we have some RSGR that are only, you know, 20,000, less than a half acre lot. So you can't just say RSGR, RS54, because we do have some non-conforming RSGR lots. And then say, okay, we can keep it in the RSGR, but limit it to a parcel size. So again, the danger slippery slope was that, well, where do you stop? If it's RSGR, and you say, well, I have 1.13, I can't have it. Well, if I have one, well, what if I'm RSGR and I have .99? I either have 1.0 or .99. It's like, where do you stop? Right? So that was, the recommendation of the plan commission, oh, this was basically in 1988 was when this was first discussed, about 10 years after incorporation. That ordinance, I think, allowed three cargo containers in the city, period.
Just three.
Then, years later, things were going along pretty good, but it looked like then we had to clean things up in '07, and then right away, a month later, do some other amendments. And we, this commission, the previous commission, if you remember, they asked for a stack of all the minutes of all these meetings. So we, we did all that. What was the rationale for having them in the first place? What was the rationale for amending them? And then in 2014, I think there were a couple more changes. But also, I need to let you know, too, cargo container regulations are not only in the zoning code, but they're also, for some reason, in the property maintenance code in chapter nine, and I can show you that reference in a minute. But the plan commission said, hey, let the sleeping dog lie. Let the sleeping dog lie. I took that to the council in November, presented it, and then December, the council said, no, we want you to go and, it was not a unanimous vote, five to two, I think, but said, hey, take this back, throw up some regulations that would have cargo containers, the size of the cargo container based on the lot size. So that kind of is 1988 to 2021. So this was an old business item on November 17th. We brought it back. This is what we presented on November 17th. The problem we have and the rationale for us staff, and I think the plan commission saying, let's just leave it as is, because these things are not, they're very difficult. Virtually every permit we issue is an after-the-fact permit, where it's a code case first, and then it's a cargo container permit. So if we open it up, there'll just be more code enforcement. So this is just an example where someone has some property, this is nearby, actually, if some of you were over on Roosevelt, you saw this cargo container. And so that's an unpermitted cargo container, and it's now a code case. This is where someone brought in four cargo containers on South Cactus. You can't see the other two. So they have also many other code violations going on at this property, too, with construction without permits and et cetera. So yeah, now you can see the four. So by not, people not understanding, there used to be a rule when I grew up, ignorance of the law is no excuse. Apparently, that law, that stuff I learned from my grandparents doesn't matter anymore, that you're just supposed to, just do what you want and then seek forgiveness later. So this is one actually had a permit temporary for, while they're building a house. So we do allow that, but when the house was done, they didn't get rid of it.
Looks like the house was done about 15 years ago.
So, well, the cargo container is, in these cases, we don't, if it's a temporary, we don't say you got to paint it earth toned colors. It's just because it's only there, going to be there for eight months, 10 months.
Supposed.
So that became a code case. So this is actually the day of the council meeting on November 17th. I went out and in five minutes found four violations. This is another one on the same day, right up the street, that this person already has a cargo container. They're building a building around it, which I guess then, I don't know if there's a cargo container anymore, because the forest will be covering the trees. So this is another one where there's three cargo containers on this property that is covered by this hoop structure, which you can find this for sale online. So this is a code violation where they, I think, have a swamp cooler in the other end of it. You can see the swamp cooler right behind the little red thing here. So this swamp, this one has air conditioning. There's a pontoon boat. There's another cargo container in the back, and then the third cargo container here, and then the hoop structure over the whole thing.
Larry, if, you had plans drawn up, an engineer approved to build like an, an outbuilding out of these and did like a facade on them, could you get that approved through the city?
As an outbuilding?
Yes.
We have had one where they were going to build a building around the building in RS20, I think it was, because they brought, I don't have a picture of that, but they brought in a cargo container in a single-family zoning district, big gray one, never painted it. it, and they're like, well, can't we build a building around it, and then it won't be there, well, yes, the cargo container's still there.
Well, I'm saying use it as, because there's kits like these.
If you're gonna use it as a house.
No, I'm saying as like a garage, because this is like a popular kit deal, and you could like, in between there, wall that in, and put an actual garage door on the other side, and if you faceted that, and I know there's plans out there, that you can actually get these.
Right now, all I've seen is three of these, or two of these with a hoop structure.
Well, I'm not, I'm just using this as kind of an example off of that, I'm not saying this was a big one.
Well, let's continue on here, and we'll have that discussion, I think, will be a natural outflow of. Okay, so I was just saying, this is the presentation we showed at the council as to why we staffed, and I think the plan commission said, no, we should not do this, so this was Mayor Wilson's slide, I don't want to give his presentation, but his slide was the rationale from the pro side, if you will, as to why these things are, they're secure, they're watertight, they're rodent proof, you can buy them in all sorts of sizes, I think eight by ten? Eight by six is the smallest you can buy, so they're cutting these things down, so you can buy them in any sizes, again, they're very secure, this is one, at the end, that the show, the slideshow was, this is, see how nice they are, this is what they could be. Then the rationale for having them, again, is to keep your stuff from rodents and stuff, and they make perfect tack rooms and, and all that, this is what field mice, or whatever you call them, pack rats do to stuff, if you don't have secured stuff, they get into your food, they get into everything, you gotta clean up after them, so, this is what you would replace a cargo container with one of these, this is in, in Kansas, and Toto, I think, is underneath that shed, and so, this is, this is the rationale for cargo container, because they're a lot more secure in that type of environment, and again, so now we're gonna go through some amendments, so what we did is we drafted the amendments in the spirit of this picture, which I think gets maybe to your question, Mr. Hanchi, is that, if we're gonna allow them, if we're gonna have them different sizes, different zoning districts, years ago, by way of background, the council at that time decided, we were getting a lot of metal sheds all over town, not just in the RSGR, but people were in a single-family zoning district, building metal pole sheds in their backyard, and the council said, no, we're gonna require you to put seventy-five percent of the outside of your metal shed has to be wood, stucco, T-one-eleven siding, so, essentially, you end up with three sides of the building having some other exterior other than metal. So, in the spirit of this is what they could be, and with the knowledge that the council historically had said, you can't just build a pole shed in a R-one-seven, or R, I guess that's it, R-seven, so that's why we came up with these, so I'm gonna turn it now, I think, over to Morgan, she's gonna walk through the code, I have the other one up online, and so we were, we'll walk through these, then we'll have a discussion.
Hello, I'm Morgan Hen, I'm the planning intern on staff, and I'm just gonna go over the main changes that we did to the zoning ordinance, section one dash six dash eight, and then I'll just do a quick walkthrough of the proposed changes that we made. So, for residential parameters, we just limited it to one, no matter what the size, and then the size of the cargo container depends on the lot size, so the smaller the lot, the smaller the cargo container, and we did insert a table to kind of make that easier, for which residential zone properties allow what sizes. We still will allow a temporary or emergency cargo container, as long as they have a building permit on file during construction, but it is limited, like Larry said earlier. Permanent cargo containers are allowed for one fifteen amp, so that can be used for like charging power tools or lights, but it cannot be used for putting air conditioning or more major things like that. The exterior must be covered in supplemental materials, so wood, masonry, stucco, or brick, and the painting must match the home and be earth toned, and then also, we require screening by plants, and we also gave you a table on page three. So, for commercial, before, there wasn't a limit, but now we just limited it to one, eight by forty, no utilities, so, nothing, it does need to be painted, it does need to be covered and screened by a nine-foot tall masonry wall, as well as plants, and it can only be used for storage for business, not personal things. So, in general, we're just eliminating volume one, chapter nine of the city code, we're bringing over the definition to match, so we can clarify and define what a cargo container is, so we're not, people can't just use a truck box or something that's not really a cargo container, and then, we're just trying to keep the language consistent.
Can you go through the?
Yeah. Okay.
You can do full screen, too. Go to view, top left, full screen, and then hit the shift and the plus. I think, should be, no, hold down, or control, hold down, control.
There we go.
There we go.
All right, so, here we just, again, made some changes to the language to keep it consistent, and then we also changed this to, only one cargo container can be allowed on single-family residentially zoned properties. So, here is that table I was talking about, for the different zoning districts and the different sizes, you can see the RSGR, RS fifty-four, anything that's over one point two five acres, you can have one eight by forty, the non-conforming, anything less than one point two five, eight by twenty, and then the RS twenty through RS five, it just goes down in size, depending on the lot. Here again, the temporary and emergency use of cargo containers are allowed, and they still must meet setbacks, and like Larry said, the landscaping and painting wasn't required, but for permanent, it is. This, again, is just, after twelve months of the issuance of the permit, the cargo container must be removed, and for emergency, I believe it's, yeah, sixty days. Down here, it's the change to the utilities, and then here, we just made changes and kind of cleaned it up for the color and landscaping, so again, just the earth tones, it must match the house, or at least complement it, and, just the covering, yeah. If it's visible, it needs to be covered, you talked about the plants, here's that list of plants I was talking about, that was given to us, they're all like desert friendly. So, yeah, for RSGR and RS fifty-four, she'll have a hundred percent of the exterior wall of the cargo container covered, and just got rid of some extra things. So, for commercial, one, eight by forty for property, kept a lot of this, they still need to be easements and right of ways, not connected to utilities, and, again, they need to be painted, same with screening and covered materials, and then this definition we just took from the, what is it, the city code, just to kind of keep it consistent and really define what a good cargo container is. Questions?
I kind of wanted to just, real quick, to show the, some of you, earlier, we were talking about the city code, I just want to make sure everybody knows what I'm talking about. So, hopefully, this gets me there, to the Apache Junction, okay, so you go to government, and you can go right to the city code, right off, this is our new homepage, Matthew McNulty, thank you very much, if you're listening, it's our spanking new website, and I think it's very phone-friendly as well. So, basically, the city code is on the city website by going to government, and then city code, you can also get to the minutes and the agendas for this meeting and all council meetings, while I'm talking about it, by hitting this link here, but, so, we're at the city code, which already opened, and now it's gonna open again, I'm gonna open it up, so, the city code has two volumes, so, the first code basically is kind of the general government, that is the mayor, the council, the committees, administration, all our fees, how the court works, how we regulate animals, well, nine is health and sanitation. For some reason, I want to say it's in one or two, maybe it's here, I'm guessing now, but, yeah, so nine dash one, for some reason, maybe other people know, cargo containers were in the property maintenance code, so part of what we're doing here, no matter what, we want to take an, we have to take a separate ordinance to the council and delete this section for cargo containers, but there was some good stuff here, as Rudy has let us know, this thing that really talks about what is and what isn't a cargo container, so we have lots of code cases where people just take the wheels and the axles off a truck and call it a cargo container, we've had many code cases over the year, so I think what we want to do is get rid of, a, clean up our definition, and I don't know if we pulled this one over or not, Rudy, for sure, but, basically, it's an overseas shipping container, it's not a truck where you take the wheels off, and so that's one of the improvements we want to make, no matter what we do, we're gonna get rid of this, nine dash one dash five. Then, I'll close that out, and so, again, volume two is, again, just kind of orient you, the zoning code is what we're looking at, in the zoning code in one dash six are supplemental regulations, what we're talking about amending here is this one dash six dash eight cargo container. And then, just for more reference, that's kind of going backwards a little bit, but definitions, we'll have to go in and change the definitions in the back here to add that, and then FYI, earlier, we talked about this chapter two, which was the, so if you ever want to go in and you're looking at the code, what does it currently read, this is where to go. So, right now, we're talking about deleting that section in volume one, chapter nine, and possibly amending, or not, one dash six dash eight. So, now, I think we'll go back and either answer any questions, or, again, just some of the general parameters, we can, oh, I'm on the wrong slideshow, so, we can, wherever you want to go from here.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Just a point of clarification to you, Larry, it was in property maintenance, because the council at that particular time felt that it was part of property maintenance, that it needed to be screened, it needed, that it had to look, right?
Okay.
Which was part of property maintenance.
Okay.
That was the rationale.
Yeah, and it has, at some point, it ended up in the zoning code, in one of the iterations, so I think it is better just to have it in one place.
Yeah.
Eventually, that's kind of our recommendation.
Mr. Hanchi.
Larry, can we go back to my point, since you didn't really answer?
Yes. Yes, sure.
So, if you had proper plans drawn up, to use them as part of a building structure, could you use those?
In theory, yes, you could, if you want to build an accessory structure that meets all the setbacks, and you have an engineer, and you can submit engineered plans as to how you're modifying the thing, and make it an accessory structure, I don't think this code quite gets us there.
Right.
Because I, we would still require the seventy-five percent rule, I think, at that point, because now it's a garage, it's a something, there's a practical nature to that, too, because they're eight by twenty, or eight by forty.
Right, but you'd be adding to that even with the additional structures and stuff, so it could be essentially a forty by sixty, or whatever.
Well, we, we may want to clean this up, but we were going with the notion that this is storage, and that it's not gonna have an awning, it's not gonna have a hoop structure, it's gonna be a storage building.
Right, and my point would be that, if I'm gonna get plans and everything, and build it as a structure, that I wouldn't be limited to one, because I'm going through the extra steps, you see what I'm saying?
I see what you're saying, I, I don't.
So, if I brought in plans, I wouldn't want this to say, hey, well, you can't do this, because you're limited to one storage cargo container.
You'd be asking for a variance.
Right, and I don't, to where that would be technically different, because you're actually doing a new building.
Right now, I think you could come in with an accessory structure that's made of anything you want, if you can get an engineer to stamp it, Rudy, am I wrong?
And if the building official accepts it, yeah, if you can prove to him that it's structurally sound and safe, and meets whatever kind of codes may be applicable.
So, we know that people make all sorts of stuff out of these, so could they be an accessory structure, can you weld them together and then cut passageways between, and if someone wants to have this, instead of building a conventional garage, or a conventional something, the practical, I mean, we still meet the height requirements, it can't be, because now you're sixteen feet, I guess it could meet, because you could put two of them. So, today, I think you can build one under the residential building code, if an engineer stamps it, so I don't know that, these were storage buildings, that's all we're trying to regulate here.
No, that's, I just want to make sure it was.
Yep, yep.
Separate.
And I, I, I know this is, we've been going round and round on this one, now, I guess my question is, it seems as though this, this new recommendation in terms of the sizes, and based on lot sizes, that was really the direction from the city council, maybe not the specifics, but they were, that's what they want to see.
That, yeah, what we got was, you know, allow them in residential zoning districts, and they can get smaller, what we didn't do, there was earlier discussion that says, if you, because right now, you, you can have an unlimited number of metal sheds in your backyard, so if I want to have a hundred eight by tens, or maybe I'm exaggerating, if I have twenty, we have them, where people put an eight by ten, and eight by ten, and eight by ten, and they put a shade structure in between, they're supposed to be six feet apart, they're supposed to meet setbacks, but right now, there's no limit on the number of storage sheds you can have in your backyard, there was an early discussion we had, well, if we're gonna allow these everywhere, then you gotta, for every cargo container you put in, you gotta take another dilapidated shed out, or something, I, I don't know, it's hard to regulate that, because they do make these things now, at any size you want, they'll make them, so now it gets to the other part of the discussion, really, anything under a hundred and twenty square feet doesn't need a permit, but we're gonna have everybody who wants a cargo container that's eight by ten, eighty square feet, have a permit.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
We can't control, enforce, the permitting process for cargo containers now, if we have cargo containers pretty much anywhere in town, I mean, they'll be in backyards, you can't look over the fence to see if they're there, you don't know whether they're stuccoed or wood, or whatever, they have to be screened, so you won't see them, so, this seems kind of, you know, you're just throwing them out there, and we're gonna look like, yeah, to any developer who comes in town and happens to see twenty-five thousand cargo containers here, there, and everywhere, and most of them won't be painted, because code enforcement won't be able to keep up with it.
So, the analogy is kind of like RVs, so we live in a community that allows RVs, you can have one RV, and we spend all our winter with people with two, three, four RVs, well, then, they have their friends come down, and they got two or three RVs, right, and they all seem to have hookups somehow, that they got some electrician to create hookups for, then, in the summer, their friends go back, and maybe they take it with them, or other people come over and say, hey, can I store my RV, so, that's, we allow, you don't need a permit right now to have an RV in your yard, backyard, side yard's supposed to be there, I guess it can be in the driveway.
That can be lived in?
No, not be lived in.
No, and there's another problem.
Stored, but I'm saying that's an analogy of.
That's another problem.
We spend an awful lot of time getting rid of second and third and fourth RVs.
Right.
Right now, we have an issue with cargo containers not being able to regulate, you know, where they show up, today, Kimberly, our code officer, said I got two more, that I could have added to the slideshow, so you can drive around any corner and find an unpermitted cargo container in five minutes in this town. So, then, how do you, should you regulate them?
Well, you're also gonna have utilities hooked up to half of them that are in backyards, I mean, let's face it, they're gonna become workshops, whether we want them to be or not, that's the nature of people. That's the nature of people and, and what they want to do in their backyard. And it's, this just seems like we're just opening the doors and saying, I don't heck with it, go for it, you know, do it.
So this was our attempt to say, based on your lot size, this is a cargo regulation, but on the accessory building side, there, again, there's no limit on the number of tough sheds you can have in your backyard. So you could have one cargo container and five tough sheds.
I'll reiterate the request just to cut down on those too. But a lot of good it's done me.
That's the problem.
Chairman Heck.
Yes, Commissioner Bigman.
Are there any restrictions on my eight by ten shed in my backyard that's made out of metal?
No.
No.
It's supposed to meet setbacks, yes. Supposed to be three feet off.
Aside from the setbacks?
Aside from the setbacks, no.
I don't have to paint it any special color?
No, sir.
I don't have to plant any special plants around it?
Nope.
I don't have to build a wall to hide it from whoever might be looking in my backyard?
Correct, nope.
So why are we looking at doing that with these cargo containers?
Uh, I guess we were asked to come up with regulations for cargo containers. So you can write this any way you like. You could say, anything smaller than an eight by twenty, you don't have to paint it. You don't have to do plantings, you don't have to get a permit. You can write whatever you want. This is our attempt at saying, how would we create parameters based on the size of the cargo container and the lot size? And I think that's the idea. Some people will replace some of these sheds with these instead.
Yeah, I think that if we're going to be allowing people to go down to Home Depot or over here to tough shed and buy their eight by ten shed, have it delivered to their yard, put it up, and not have to replant special plants to hide it, paint it special colors, and build a wall around it to keep people from looking at it, why are we asking that of an eight by ten shed made out of better metal that's sturdier and even stronger?
So then the approach would be, is there, do you want to limit these? Should there be a limit on the number of sheds you could have in your backyard?
I would go along with the limit on how many you could have.
That's how we had that.
No, there's no limit.
There is none.
In any zoning district, there's no limit on.
As long as, as long as there's less.
In the commercial, it actually said unlimited, and we were limiting that to one. On the, on the commercial side. But right now, maximum number is for the eight by tens and all that, there is no. For cargo containers, yes, one eight by forty. These, we were going to limit it to one. Again, we're just.
There, there is a maximum lot coverage rule, but I mean, unless somebody calls code enforcement out for whatever reason, and somebody sat there and counted the square footage of all the containers, you know, that's another rule that's very difficult to enforce.
Yeah, I think it depends on the zoning district. Sometimes it's forty, fifty percent lot coverage. So that's your house, your shed, your carports, whatever. And then if someone has a bunch of these sheds, on a large lot, fifty percent of your lot's a lot of territory. So on a small lot though, you know, essentially you take an aerial photograph and you try to figure out how much of their lot is covered with sheds.
Chairman Heck, question?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Commissioner Trump.
I have a few questions regarding this. So you could take any tough shed and make it into a workshop, correct?
Correct.
And we're limiting the, the proposal is to limit the number of sheds to one on, or.
Cargo container.
Cargo container, sorry.
Yes, sir.
Limit the number of cargo containers on a commercial property to one.
Correct.
What will Walmart do come Black Friday in the holiday season when they generally have three or four full of all the Christmas stuff that they have to store because there's no room in the store? What do they do?
So they could come in for a permit, a temporary permit, seasonal permit, maybe that should not be, maybe it should be screened from view. So they, pretty much where they're at on the west side is where they would have them, or in the parking lot or whatever. So we know that they're in use, but where they've been applied in the city is not Walmarts of the world. It's, you know, I think we have one or two, Rudy, down by that golf cart place down there in South Idaho. Again, part of the problem we had, if some of you were on the commission, the guy bought a commercial property, showed up with six of them, and said he was going to build a building. Then we had to finagle a conditional use permit for him.
It was personal, it was personal use and the whole thing, yeah.
So the question is, you know, we don't want to stifle commerce, but is there some reasonable amount?
I mean, obviously Walmart only has them there for a month to two months. Usually they get their, start getting their product beginning of November before Black Friday occurs, and they have a tremendous need for storage space.
Yeah.
And so they'll bring in three or four, or five or six of those containers to, you know, put all the eighty-six inch TV screens and stuff. But the way this is written, it says, the proposal is, is that, you know, they would only be allowed to have one. I didn't read anything in here that says that, you know, under special conditions, they could apply for a permit. Can you show me?
It's just a temporary emergency.
That's not temporary emergency use, that's.
Temporary or.
Temporary use.
Temporary or emergency?
Is it temporary or, or temporary emergency?
Went past it.
Storage not connected. Yeah, we don't have a temporary in here. And then I think we have a strikeout of the three that started this whole exercise. I know this one's gone for sure. I thought one of the other ones I had meant, they had a question mark. So this thing was written back in the day for three cargo containers at the very beginning. Wrote a whole ordinance for three cargo containers. So, so the council has said over the years, yes, I guess we want to have cargo containers, so how do you regulate them? That's the.
So also regarding that for the commercial, you'll have, that they would have to put a nine foot wall around it to screen it, and then plant plants to screen the wall?
Yep. Just like we do with dumpsters. Any new commercial, you want to have a dumpster, it's got to have a screener on it.
Right. How far away from the front door does it have to be? Because you put a wall there, or can they put a gate on that wall in order to access it?
Normally these would be in the back. They would not be in the parking lot, they wouldn't be at the front door. They are in the service area where the compactor is and the loading docks, that's where you would have them. That's where you typically would screen stuff anyway.
Okay.
So again, these are tweaks. You can make any kind of tweak you want. You can make it a six foot wall, eight foot wall, no wall. This is what we're suggesting, that right now there's an, this, if you go back here, there's no limit on the number of cargo containers you can have on a commercial property today. You have to get a permit. It can only be for your business use. You can't bring your stuff from home and bring it to your business to store your stuff that you could get a cargo container at your house for, I guess. So right now, what's the middle ground here to say, you can have a thousand cargo containers, or you can have one? It's somewhere in between.
So we could actually put a little bit, a little bit more verbiage in there stating that for seasonal.
This is just our first meeting. So yeah, we can add whatever language that's being suggested here, if there is seasonal.
It can be in five, at use, down there in five. It'd be a perfect place to also add seasonal use.
This could actually.
Yeah, you, you could put a subheading on that for seasonal use.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Parker.
You know, one of the reasons years ago that this became such a discussion was because there were so many popping up, hither and yon. They were ugly. They were in places that, that's the first thing you saw when you rode down the street. And it was kind of an attempt to clean up the community as a whole. So I, I don't, you know, trying to get them covered, et cetera, was one of the methods that was tried to, to try to just keep them out of view. We realized that people, especially in the large lot areas, wanted these cargo containers for their tack and, and other things. But to have them sitting in front of their houses, which several of them were and probably still are, and to have them packed in the side of residential areas, the one that you showed us with four, there are lots of others around that have one or two, just sitting kind of half in the front yard. And, and it looks, frankly, it looks tacky. And we have a community that we would like people to come to and say, wow, what a great community. It looks so nice and blah, blah, blah. And I realize that sounds kind of, I don't know. But I think it's important to remember that, that part of our, of the job in the community is, is to see to it that it presents itself well. We want businesses to come in. We want businesses to feel good about it. We want people to move in and feel good about it. I realize that most of the HOAs will probably say, not in our place, you won't put these things. You know, I realize that. But there are a lot of areas that are not HOAs where these would be very unsightly to be absolutely honest about it. And I think it's something that we need to think about. That's.
Just come out and say you're against them.
Pardon?
I said, just come out and say you're against them.
No, I'm not. I think that they have an appropriate use in appropriate places. I do not think that they are appropriate beside a residential home on a street where houses are what, eight feet apart or what have you. And there are some out there today like that. And they're not permitted, and code enforcement goes crazy trying to permit them. And I believe that sheds ought to be limited also. I, I think that, that those are things that, to clean up the community, to give this community a look that we can all be proud of and, and all feel. So no, I'm not against them in the appropriate place.
Well, I, I don't know. But I think our population has grown quite a bit since nineteen eighty-eight.
True, but where have they grown?
I think our population has grown quite a bit since the year two thousand.
Where has it grown? It's grown in HOAs.
Not only HOAs.
Not much.
I can remember where east of Tomahawk was scattered sporadic homes.
Uh-huh. I do too. I remember when there was nothing.
When I drive, when I drive around in that neighborhood, it's not sporadic anymore.
Okay.
There's houses on lots.
What's your point?
I don't think us having a problem with cargo containers is restricting the people moving into this community.
Okay. We'll agree.
I don't see where we have to regulate cargo containers if we're not going to be regulating an eight by ten storage shed that I bought down at Home Depot.
I agree.
Or any such thing like that. As long as it's within the, the code that's already established where there's minimum setbacks are observed, I don't see where we have a problem. But telling somebody they're going to have to paint it a special color, plant special plants around it, build a wall so that nobody can see it, is a little absurd. When I don't have to do the same thing for my eight by ten storage shed from Lowe's.
Mr. Chair.
All right, okay. Yeah, Commissioner Hansi.
Well, I would like to point out on page three, section six, they actually take it a lot further. And if you're not in the RSGR or RS fifty-four, you not only have to paint it a special color, you have to cover it.
True.
So.
It just gets worse.
So I would say we'd want to do away with that as well.
So again, not to interrupt the good dialogue, but this is what the discussion was. This is what the rationale for doing this. This is the slideshow for why we should do this. But this is not what we're going to get.
No.
We're not going to get this. So we can cut it all out and basically say, you know, you can just have them. It could make it a lot simpler in enforcement and everything else to say, if it's, doesn't need a permit, you don't need to paint it, you can do whatever you want to it.
Chairman Heck.
Yeah.
This picture that's showing right now is not somebody's storage unit. It's not their tack house. This is somebody's, probably office.
It's an office, sure.
And I've seen them, and they work fantastic for that purpose. But we're talking about somebody's storage unit in the backyard or a tack unit next to their little stor, their horse barn. We're not talking about something fancy dancy here.
But that's the discussion at the council, sir, was that this was the presentation that was given for the rationale as to why we should open this up.
Well, this is what.
And so that's how we wrote it, in the spirit that if we're going to have these, then let's shoot for setting the bar a little bit high.
Chairman.
Yeah, yeah.
Couple, couple of things. One, I've seen some instances where they have taken cargo containers and turned them into homes.
They have whole TV shows about it. You've seen them, sure.
Yeah, so that's something. The other thing is, I would take a look at, you know, I don't know why we have one six eight for cargo containers and one six five for accessory buildings when really the cargo container is an accessory building.
True.
It should be a subset of accessory buildings, and I probably agree that we should be limiting the number of accessory buildings.
So we have a section right now on cargo containers, and we were directed to go work on the cargo container section. That doesn't mean we can't come back and combine the two sections or say that, you know, here are the parameters for accessory buildings.
And, and I think you have one other thing that you're going to have to keep in consideration is right now your maximum is eight by forty, which is an ocean-going cargo container. They now have eight by forty-eight and eight by fifty-two for domestic use intermodal. And they've been in common use for over ten years. So those will be hitting the market for residential purchase anytime now, if they're not out there already. So you're not going to be limited to just forty feet. You're going to be getting some fifty-two, maybe even some fifty-five footers in here.
But the city can regulate whatever length it wants, size, and, or not regulate. The city can do away with all the regulations if they want.
Yeah.
Yep. Commissioner, if I can just jump in, having been here through any number of these, we could come up with scenarios that are, would, that would suggest or support one way or another. And it, I don't believe we will ever find one course of action that will satisfy everyone. At this point, and the reason I asked the question at the beginning, this is what the city council is recommending. So ultimately, I, I see this kind of as a fait accompli, if you will. We, we might be able to recommend some alterations, but this is what they wanted. So I think if we go and we try and recommend a whole lot of different things.
They're just going to change it.
It's going to go nowhere. It's going to go nowhere. So I think we're just, we are spinning our wheels here on something that I think we, at this point, and I think we still have, there's going to be public, there'll be public meetings on, public hearings on this too, right?
Well, we have to eventually draft an ordinance and present it to this body.
Right. But I mean, I guess I'm, I'm looking for, I'm looking for some more public input and all. I, but I just, I know that I was part of the, the planning and zoning when we said, no, let's keep it the way it is. And now we have this, which is absolutely counter to everything we talked about. So my feeling is, we just, at this point, accept that this is probably some degree where we're going to wind up. Perhaps we can, there's some tweaking we can do, but I think we just have to. This is, this is where city council is, is heading on.
Can I ask one more question?
Certainly.
If you take a look on page at the bottom under C, emergency use, okay? It says cargo containers may be used on its emergency accommodation, okay? Is that an allowance, or can you live in it? Accommodation to me implies living in it.
Right.
Second, second line. What page number is that?
Number one.
Oh, this one. It's an emergency accommodation, meaning we're going to let you have it, not a dwelling, not a.
Well, you may want to change that.
Well, we did, we struck it. That's what that means. We struck it and came up with new language.
No, you know, the highlighted emergency use. Go up, above.
Oh, I see. Yeah, okay. I'm sorry.
Yeah, that does infer living.
It does, you know, accommodation would sound like it's a.
Yeah. Yeah.
Emergency storage.
Yeah, you know, it's an allowance, not an accommodation. They mean the same thing from what you're implying, but accommodation could be interpreted very easily as, okay, now you're going to let me live in it.
So, um, we can come back and essentially say that if it doesn't need a building permit, in other words, if it's under a hundred and twenty square feet, which I think is eight by fourteen, is that what we came up with, somebody?
Eight by twelve or, yeah.
Or fifteen, it's actually an odd number. I think it's fifteen.
Ten by twelve or eight by fourteen.
So if it doesn't need a building permit, you, you can do whatever you want. Doesn't need a building permit, if it's under a hundred and twenty square feet, then it's just like a, a tough shed. And then basically say that in those smaller zoning districts. You can have anything under a hundred and twenty square feet. You don't have to cite it, you don't have to paint it, you just can put it in. That's an alternative there. We can go, we can go to.
Limit the number.
Huh?
Limit the number of sheds.
Yes, and if we have to go in this section and limit the number, or have, I don't, again, I don't know how you start saying, well, if you take a dilapidated shed out, then you can have two and, you know, an exchange program. Or if we have to go back and limit the number of accessory buildings to some number, and then we're going to argue about what that number is for a long time. Is it one, is it five? I got a lot of stuff, so I should have six.
Do accessory buildings have to be in the backyard?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, because in your smaller lots, you're going to have difficulty getting a regular cargo container eight feet wide into a backyard.
They have a, uh, that's why it's easier to put a tough shed and assemble it there, but, or come in the alley if there is one, or people could get a crane.
Understood, yeah, that would be one way. But, um, as, as long as they're in the rear yard, it's probably less objectionable than if it's in the front yard.
Yeah, you can't have them in the front yard. You can't have them in the front setback. You could have them to the side or the rear of the facade of the house.
Yeah. Although many of the examples you have are in the front yard or side yard.
Chairman Heck.
Yes.
Larry, I, I, I do believe that at least painting them to get rid of the, um, the sea, the sea-going language of Singapore and whatever else that's on the side of them.
Graffiti, whatever.
And, and the ugly green or chocolate brown, um, with the, the bright white letters. Yeah, that, that needs to go.
We can put it in the code, but if we're not going to require a permit, then there's really going to be no way to, to enforce it unless the neighbor complains. That's really what it's going to be. So we can put something in the code that says it has to be painted to match the house or earth tones, whatever you want, but it'll be an enforcement. I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm saying, yeah, we should, but since we're not issuing a permit, there's no way to.
Chair, well, would we say, say painted uniformly? Cause you can have a red and white tough shed barn that doesn't match your house.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Just uniformly painted.
Just get rid of the advertising on the side.
Right. Just uniformly painted, you know, something like that.
I can go put up John Deere sign on my shed, and the city can't say anything about it.
Right.
So why would we want to say, well, Merx, Merx has to be removed from a cargo container?
Say it has to be uniformly painted, and then you can have, you can put whatever signage you want up on it.
Well, why am I going to paint over Merx and then decide to paint it back on there?
Cause I don't think you'd be putting Merx on there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I might. I think you're a fantastic company.
I, again, I feel like, I feel like we're, we're crossing.
I know, but I'm looking for, if you're going to bring this back in two weeks or a month, we need to know what to bring back. I'm trying to, I'm trying to elicit, uh, some sort of general consensus, I guess.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, yes, Commissioner.
It seems to me from what I'm hearing that if it meets the one twenty requirement, they don't need a permit.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
If, um, oh, I had more, oh, temporary usage, i.e., uh, for Walmart and places like that.
Yep, I heard that, yep.
Be in there, and then the getting rid of the word accommodation. And that seems to be basically what we've said.
Well, what about the, uh, having the cover man wood or masonry and all that?
It sounds like.
I would say get rid of that too.
Forget it.
I, I'm, I'm not in favor of having to do that.
But I, I really.
Because I don't have to do it on something I buy at Home Depot.
That's in a garden shed. Anything under a hundred and twenty square feet, you don't.
Right.
Anything over a hundred and twenty square feet, you should have a, should you have some material around it? Cause it needs, now it needs a permit?
Pretty good size, I would say yes.
Okay.
Well, what about on like RSGR or anything over an acre and a quarter? If you have a metal building, you don't?
No, we weren't proposing that anyway. But basically for the smaller lot sizes, again, if it's over one twenty, it needs a permit, and then it needs to have, I think it should be treated then as an accessory building. It should have, we could just make it seventy-five percent of the exterior, just like any other accessory building, has to have some skin on it.
Excuse me, it's only going to affect the RS twenty and RS twenty M. Should we even worry about it then?
RS twenty.
It'll go from.
Well, if, if these districts here are all basically want, I think in any zoning district, you're going to be able to bring in a hundred and twenty square foot. So I could have my eight by, unless we're going to work on that. So if I'm RSGR, I can bring in my eight by forty with a permit, and I can bring in a half a dozen eight by tens or eight by twelves.
Not if we limit the number of accessory buildings. I think this should be under accessory buildings anyway, the way that it's, the way they're used. The use is an accessory building, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so if we limit the number of accessory buildings or suggest to the council, they might want to limit that. And I believe they brought that up in December, a limitation on the number of accessory buildings. Yeah.
And move this to the accessory building section. Just get rid of this whole section, pull it into accessory building.
It's a subset of the accessory building.
Yeah.
So you're going to limit how many garages somebody can have?
Sure.
Well, we do already, we do already, it's based on your lot size.
Right.
Yeah.
So are you going to keep it as part of your lot coverage or the actual number of buildings?
It's going to have to be, I think, a combination of both. I think we need to limit the number of sheds you can have in your backyard.
I do too.
Cause I have, even the former mayor, I got a complaint through him that someone had four sheds, and all they can see when they look out the backyard is the top of four sheds.
Look out the other way. Looking at your neighbor. Yeah.
Okay, um, I think that.
Is that horse dead yet?
Have we beat this?
For now?
I think we beat it to death.
All right, so we'll come back. I don't know if it's going to be two weeks, so, cause we got a lot of rework here to do, but we'll do what we can.
I don't think we beat it to death.
All right. All right, thank you. So, uh, the, the next item, uh, information and reports, I don't, I don't have anything to add on this agenda. Director's report, Larry, anything?
Um, just FYI, I think we kind of alluded to it earlier with the fifteen hundred homes going from a hundred and fifteen a year to a hundred, to a hundred and fifteen a month. So we are adding staff, we're adding two more permit techs, we're adding a principal engineer, we're adding a building inspector right now, a, another planner, and, uh, next year's budget, we're adding three building inspectors, and, uh, probably either a planning tech or an engineering tech, uh, maybe another permit tech. So right now, we're, we got six positions we're advertising right now.
You may, you may, you may need cargo containers for some office space.
And next. I think, I think if they're out in the parking lot, why not?
Yeah.
And then, so I think there's like six right now, and then another six. And I think if you're on the city council, you know, this is affecting GIS and IT and all these departments. We'll have to, Joel will have to add three more attorneys and, you know.
Woo-hoo, Joel.
So he wants his weekends off in the future. So anyway, just FYI, we're gearing up for this state land thing. We're the first department to get hit, and then it's going to be a trickle effect to Parks and Rec and Library and everybody else. So that's all, I just.